To talk about the draft of the IT master plan itself. And I recognize that can be a little bit challenging for people who haven't yet seen it. But we wanted you to, when you do have the opportunity to look at the plan, and it is being posted today, in fact, it's posted now on the website. So when you have the opportunity to see it and look at it, you'll be able to do it in context of the discussion we're having this afternoon. So what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about how we developed the plan. And let me start with a little bit about what the plan entails. And the plan sets IT priorities, and these align with the mission and vision of the university. And like any strategic plan, we start with that. But it's not limited to that. It also considered the assessment that we did at the outset of this project. It considered strategic issues we'd identified objectively for the university. And it entailed work sessions. Beth mentioned 10 work sessions. You're going to hear more about that. It entails 16 strategic initiatives that we've identified for technology. And we're going to take you through those at a very high level. And then we're going to talk about a couple of those initiatives. So you have, again, some context at what you're looking at as you look at the plan. I think the plan provides a starting point for projecting resource needs. So as you have the opportunity to view the plan, you'll see in there, we identified some of the direct human resources for these initiatives. We identified some of the organizational impact of these initiatives. We identified some priority in sequencing. And that's, it's really important to understand that priority and sequence. We're going to take you through that, why one initiative follows another. It sets some expectations for an anticipated timeline and for the impact of that timeline. We have some exhibits that we'll share with you this afternoon. You'll see these in the plan, but you have to be mindful that, at this point, these are not necessarily finite times. So the initiatives, the priority, the precedents are really important. And understanding that the, there's a, perhaps, a appearance of finiteness in looking at the exhibits in the plan that may not be as exact as it perhaps appears. As Beth mentioned, this is a plan-to-plan. And by that, we mean that the next steps are to undertake specific project planning, to undertake, to engage specific areas of the university. So this is not intended to be detailed project planning. One thing that it does do, though, is to establish a sustainable planning process. And when we talk about that, we think that's very important because a technology plan, I think probably everyone in this room can appreciate how technology changes rapidly at times. And it's not just a finite activity. So a technology plan is really valid for the day that you print it off the printer. So it's important to have a process that can sustain the planning concepts that we're talking about here. And you'll see that, and you'll see how that integrates with some of the other, the other business and operational-type planning drivers at the university. So I think that's, that's really important. The, any immediate questions from what I've just shared with you about the plan? Okay. So very quickly, as Beth mentioned, this was 14 months in the making, and some would say it's even longer than that from the time this first was conceptualized. But we started last January with a kickoff. We spent time on campus doing interviews, engaged a lot of the different stakeholders across the university. I think that was really important. Over the summer, we identified some of those strategic initiatives and worked with the steering committee. That we, we identified a series of 10 focused working sessions that would be conducted, and those were conducted in the fall. You'll hear about those. And some of you participated in those sessions. And that led to the development of this draft document, which a core group has been focusing on, working on and discussing. We've shared that with the cabinet. And that's brought us to this point where we have a draft that we're really sharing here. And we're inviting over the next couple of weeks comments and feedback about that. So we'll, you'll hear about that at the end of the session. I think we've already touched on this. Joan Lorden and Beth Harden were our executive sponsors of this plan. I mentioned we had an active project steering committee, and that was really important because that steering committee was a cross-section of academic, student administration, research perspectives from the, across the university community. So I think we had, what, 14 people on that steering committee. We had over 300 people at the university that were engaged in the course of this process. I talked about 10 strategic planning work sessions that we held. And you can see in this pie chart the makeup of that. We had 105 participants in those sessions, anywhere from 10 to 15. Some people participated in more than one session. They were topic-specific. And the outcomes of those sessions were the initiatives that you're seeing. So, so probably the important takeaway for everyone in this room is that the initiatives that you're seeing in this IT strategic plan were developed by the university community here. This is not just, just a plan that, you know, came off the shelf with options, but, but this was really a lot of engagement, active participation, and some very, you know, very involved, you know, work sessions. So with that, Dave, did I cover the points that we wanted to make about the planning process? Yes?
Are the slides available along with the report?
Yes. The slides are available. I think we're putting these on the website as well. Yep. So you'll have a chance to see these. Okay. Dave?
There's still some seats up here if you folks need them. This is, wow, this is quite a turnout. I think I can safely say if this isn't the biggest group I've ever spoken to, it's one of the biggest groups. So bear with me here, guys. All right. Why is this important to me? You know, first of all, we want to emphasize, this is a plan for the university, by the university, we feel. You know, we facilitated it, but the plan was created by the university. And, and these are some of the key points that we think are worth taking a second to read through and think about with regards to academic and administrative technology, support, research support, students, faculty, staff, thinking about it from a university-wide perspective. And to do that with greater collaboration and greater efficiency across the university. And then, we really think the plan will help build a stronger sense of IT community. And we'll talk more about that. But when we say IT community, thinking about the broader context of IT here at the university, not just ITS, not just IT and liberal arts or, you know, but the broader IT community that exists here across the university. As Clint mentioned, there's 16 initiatives. So I'm just going to, we quickly are going to post those here, and then we're going to talk about them more in a different structure that'll hopefully help kind of frame how the initiatives came to be. But we probably had, gosh, I don't know, six, 20-something initiatives at one point. And we've kind of gone through an iterative process to come down to the 16 that you see today. And they really cover five key concepts, which I'm going to speak to in a minute. So all of these are spoken to, obviously, directly in the plan and so forth. The other, other eight, so to make up the 16. Again, they cover security, governance, funding, infrastructure planning, enterprise architecture planning, and IT communications. Those are the, some of the issues that we speak to in the plan. But where, you know, how did these, how did these come to be? How did these, you know, 16 initiatives come to be? And what do they, what do they really represent? And I really think it, it breaks into five key elements that, that we're going to speak to. And that's really strength in service delivery. So how do we deliver services at the university? Are we doing that most effectively now? Can we, can we do that better? Support resources with sustainable planning. Meaning, this isn't a one-and-done. I think Beth already alluded to it, Clint emphasized it, and we're going to keep emphasizing it. IT planning, by its nature, has to be ongoing. It has to be about reassessment and reevaluation because the IT landscape changes so quickly in today's environment. So we need to be, as we said in the other meeting earlier today, agile. And that was a word that came up. We've heard other clients say nimble. It's easier said than done. But hopefully, the framework we've put before you in the plan that we've developed thinks about these things and gives us a framework from which to plan in an agile framework. Improve security. We don't want to, we didn't overemphasize security in this plan, but it is a component. And it's a critical component from a risk standpoint and also from a, thinking from a common perspective standpoint. And we'll talk more about that. Establish technical standards. This is a two-edged sword, I think, in many ways. This is not, when we talk about the technical standards, we don't want to just think about, you have to, you know, you can, what did Henry Ford say when they came out with the Model T? You can have any color you want as long as it's black, you know? I mean, that's, you know, for the, for the, for the car. So that's not what we're proposing here in our technical standards. But it is about talking about technical standards and developing a baseline from which the university can plan more effectively. And then building community, which we've already talked about and will continue to emphasize. And what that means is developing a common, core competencies around university staff for IT services. Regardless of where you live, there's certain skills, whether it's soft skills or management, just thinking in terms of the skills, the core competencies that IT staff should have regardless of where they live within the, within the university. And understanding that there is a, an organization that exists beyond ITS or beyond the local IT shop. So, so again, that hybrid, we're going to, we're going to call it a hybrid IT organizational model for the purposes of the plan. But thinking about, how do we get folks collaborating and communicating better together? So I'm going to go through the five that I just said. And what you see in front of you are the initiatives that speak to each of those five key elements. And I'm going to speak to those at a high level. And then we're going to, Vienna is going to share a couple of specific examples when she gets up. And one will be IT service delivery model, so I'm not going to speak too deeply to that. But ITC service delivery model is really fundamental. And as you'll see, when you look at the plan itself, we spent a lot of time on this. It was the first work session we did. So it was very important to think about IT service delivery model and what that means and what the heck does it mean? So, you know, we took it from the, from the framework of a common good. So the sense of, there are some things that really probably are best served being provided centrally, and there are other things that should not be served centrally. And we talk about that, and we speak to it. And we actually give quite a bit of detail on that, and Vienna will speak to a workflow diagram that was developed in conjunction with the work session group to give that a starting point. IT support for research computing. This was an interesting topic of discussion in the prior meeting. I'll just say, it's not IT support for research computing at the loss or at the, you know, at the subtraction of academic computing. That was one of the issues that came up in the prior meeting. It's intended to recognize that the research portfolio of the university is growing, and we want to continue to support that, that growth from an IT perspective. So whatever it's going to take to keep that moving forward, to keep those grant dollars coming in, IT needs to be part of that game plan. And then service portfolio program and IT service catalog. So service catalog. There are already, ITS folks are saying, well, we got a service catalog. What are you talking about? But you have a service catalog for ITS. But as we know, 50% of the IT staff that live on this campus don't live in ITS. So there's an IT service catalog concept that needs to go beyond ITS if we're going to think about IT from a broader, broader sense. So we're talking about expanding that IT service catalog concept and also bringing in a portfolio management program that is part of your ongoing sustainable planning that looks at reassessment, that thinks about these things on an annual basis. Support for resources. So we don't provide a silver bullet, I'm sorry. You know, I think a lot of folks are saying, well, IT funding, you know, how are you going to deal with that? So what we acknowledge in the plan is that IT funding, there needs to be a bucket of funding or an acknowledgement that there are certain things that keep the lights on. And there are certain things that need to be funded for innovation and strategic direction of the university. And there are other things that may be considered transformative. So we've identified three concepts within IT funding for the university to move forward with. One is maybe, again, that, that operational IT funding. But then there's an IT funding that needs to happen beyond that operational, okay? And then IT governance as well. So there, again, there's a governance structure that exists today at some level of the university. What we're talking about is a governance model that supports an ongoing sustainable planning process. And again, we have a diagram that Vienna will share that shows that, an annual planning concept. And IT governance needs to be a key actor in supporting that sustainable planning process. Information security. I think I've already spoken to this one, but our primary focus of the planning work was to consider the university's current security practices. And how do we build upon that? And how do we continue to support an environment that's always going to be at odds with each other in some ways when you deal with academic freedom and you deal with the need for a certain baseline of security? And we talked about this in the other meeting with the academic council as well. It needs constant dialogue. And, and there are some baseline items, I think, that we can address. Sensitive data is sensitive data. I don't care where it lives personally. I think there is a, so there's some opportunities to consider IT, and we refer to it as an IT security posture here. But how we plan for and how we address IT security at the university. And then, of course, subsequent to the assessment, we want to promote the education and awareness of any changes in the IT security framework at the university. Again, those technical standards. The analogy I use, and this is probably not even needed in this audience, but the analogy I use is there's electricity that comes into the building, and you maybe want some standards around that. You don't want five different, you know, venues for electricity to come in, or five different ways the wires are built and so forth. But then there's light fixtures. And those light fixtures may change. There may be certain personal tastes. There may be certain areas where light fixtures, you know, are not, they serve different purposes. So on a most simplistic level, I think of the sustainable infrastructure planning and the technical reference model as a baseline again for establishing some things that should just be common and should be standard across the university, and other areas where there will be opportunities and the need for diversity of thinking and diversity of approach to solving technology solutions or challenges. And it also speaks to procurement. So we have procurement issues where we want to address those at the best economies of scale. So if we're not, you know, coordinating between maybe what ITS is doing and other IT units, then we're not necessarily getting the best bang for our buck. So we want to think about that as well. Enterprise architecture model, system lifecycle planning. Those speak more to systems integration and how data is shared amongst the systems. So do we have effective systems integration today? We've got a lot of systems out there. Should we have fewer systems serving more stakeholders to more effectively deliver data to the users who need that data? And that speaks then to improving data quality. Data quality is a much bigger issue than IT, as you all know, or many of you know. And so we're not solving the data quality issue here in the, in the IT plan. We're speaking to it from an IT perspective. What are the IT things that can happen to improve data quality at the university? And then finally, building community. Again, we have a very rich, broad IT community at the university. And as somebody pointed out in our prior meeting, not only do we have an IT community here, but there's a broader IT community that exists outside of the university that many of you are dealing with on a regular basis, if not a daily basis, whether it's vendors, researchers, nonprofit entities that are providing some type of support. So we spoke to it particularly from IT community of, of central and distributed IT and, and developing mechanisms to get that community closer in coordination and collaboration of efforts. So we talked about an IT communications model that'll support that. We talked about those core competencies, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The core competencies of IT, regardless of where you live, again, in the IT community. And then this hybrid IT organizational model. And the hybrid IT organizational model is not about a centralization effort. But what it is about is identifying who should be doing what. And it goes back to the IT service delivery model. If there's some things that should be done on a central basis, then let's talk about that and figure out the best way for the organization to be structured. And if there are some areas where the IT service is best provided on a localized level, then we need to understand that as well. And subsequently, if we can do that, we think that the IT resources that exist, regardless of where they live, will be able to more effectively do their jobs. So that if you are maybe in a local service environment, you don't have to worry about so much keeping the lights on necessarily, and you can serve your faculty and students more effectively with the limited resources you have available to you. So this is not intended to be a Gantt chart, but it looks like a Gantt chart. So, and, and one of the comments we had in the other meeting was, let's not think about this on necessarily a, a prescriptive level, you know, or, or it has to happen in this order. But what we've come up with through a few rounds of iteration is this is the sequence that we see the, all of the 16 initiatives falling into. And some have to, we think, have to happen in a certain logical sequence to support the building of the different blocks we've identified. So we've laid it out here. I'm going to let Vienna speak to what the, the solid, the shade, and the lighter shade mean. And then we're going to speak to IT service delivery and core competencies as examples of what an initiative looks like in the plan itself. Okay? Any questions, though, before I sit down, since I have to stand at the microphone to record? None? Come on. All right. Well, there'll be time for discussion, too, so.
Thank you, Dave. So as Dave said, this chart shows all the initiatives that are contained within the strategic plan. It plots them on a five-year timeline. And just so you know, the, the coloring corresponds to the color that's used within the plan, so that's not completely random. There are three shades that we've used. The darkest shade indicates that that is the active implementation of the initiative. So this is when you're really going through the initiative action items. The medium shading indicates that you've done most of the action items, so the initiative is more or less implemented at this point. However, there may still be some, you know, some residual work that's happening in order to kind of, I guess, get it to the point where it becomes the lightest shading, where it's really just incorporated into business as usual. At that point, we, we recognize that there's still going to need to be an effort to make sure that, you know, what you've accomplished is sustained. But really, you're not directly allocating resources, resources to implementation at this point. Also, Dave did mention this, I mean, this is for planning purposes. It's not intended to be completely prescriptive, and we anticipate that some of these things may change slightly as you get into actually implementing. So we're going to take you through two examples of an initiative from the plan. The first example is core competencies. And this is to establish, promote, and develop core competencies with respect to all information technology professionals across the campus IT community. The second is the IT service delivery model. And that's to establish and maintain an IT service delivery model that proactively balances resources with shifting needs and priorities. So for each of these initiatives, you'll see they have a set of common elements. Each initiative starts with an action statement. The action statement is usually a sentence or two, and it really just captures the essence of the initiative. Following the action statement, there's some supporting detail. We then identify initiative owner as well as consultative roles. So the initiative owner is ultimately who's accountable for getting the initiative implemented. And then consultative role indicates those people who are going to be most heavily involved. We have a budget estimate, again, for planning purposes only, but kind of begins to capture what the costs that might be associated with the initiative are. In some cases, we're also identifying where we think there may be savings recognized as a result of implementing an initiative. We then identify action steps. This is really your checklist for implementing the initiative. It doesn't get too much into the detail, but it does make the initiative a little bit more tangible. We have some measures of success. As you'll see, these are posed as, as questions, so kind of a way to assess if you're making progress. And then, for most initiatives, we've provided some contextual information. This is usually, you know, peer research that basically supports the direction of the initiative or informs it. So with that, I'm going to show two, the two examples that I introduced. So the first one is core competencies for the IT community. And I will just remind everyone that the plan will be available for you all to read in detail. So you may not get a chance to read everything on the screen now, but you will be able to do so later. As you see, we have the action statement that kicks things off. And then we have five core competencies identified. We felt that this was an important initiative to share because IT community is such a foundational concept throughout the plan. And establishing these core competencies is going to be really a critical starting point to kind of making the IT community a little bit more cohesive and bringing it together. So we've identified leadership, management, technical proficiency, communication, and The initiative owner, we have the Associate Vice Chancellor for Human Resources. We have a consultative role, which includes the CIO, deans, vice chancellors, IT managers, and IT governance. We have a budget estimate provided, again, just kind of a high-level indication. And then we identify the action items. You know, this is kind of, kind of your checklist to be well. And then measures of success. For example, has the university increased retention among IT staff? Have there been changes made to how IT staff are mentored and evaluated? And again, each of these initiatives, you may find as you go that there are additional measures of success that you may add as you kind of build out exactly how it's going to be implemented. And then we also provide some contextual information. So for the next, let's see. So the IT service delivery model, this initiative is actually quite a bit larger, has a number of components. So in the interest of time, we're not going to get into all of those right now. But we are going to share kind of a model that we came up with, which really reflects a lot of the key concepts that this initiative discusses. So earlier, Dave had talked about the concept of common good services. And this is kind of a guide, as it, as it's titled. It's not intended to be, you know, completely, you know, black and white, prescriptive, but a guide for IT service delivery assessment. And it has a number of considerations to go through when thinking about an IT service and whether or not it should be considered a common good IT service. So for instance, the starting point, does the service directly impact 80% or more of campus constituents? And if so, are there benefits to delivery at scale? If you answer both those, yes to both those questions, that probably makes the most sense for this to be a common good service and therefore to be delivered through some sort of central mechanism. In most cases, that's most likely going to be ITS, but it may also be, in some cases, another central service provider. But the point being that it shouldn't be replicated across different departments, colleges, units. But there's also other considerations, you know? Maybe there isn't benefit to delivery at scale, but the technology is so mature that it's easy enough to develop as a, or to deliver as a common good service. But if it's not relatively stable and mature, then it may not be quite ready. Maybe it still needs to be nurtured in more of a localized environment. So I don't want to spend too much time on this at this point, but are there any immediate questions that come up, just in understanding, you know, what this is intended to kind of help facilitate?
I also want to speak to the inverse that we, you know, talked about in the other meeting, that it's not just to protect.
Sure.
It's, so what we, a, a good point that was brought up in the other meeting by one of the faculty was, you know, I think her point was, well, you shouldn't be looking at the 80%. You should be looking at the 10 or 20% and going kind of in the inverse. But this is intended to support the inverse. It's not like if it doesn't meet the 80%, it goes away, you know, it's, it, it goes in the, you know, the trash bin. That's not the intent. The intent is to provide that service at the appropriate level, though, and not, you know, have it as a quote-unquote "common good" or "central resource" if it is a very low. if it is a very localized effort. So again, it's identifying the appropriate level of support for the services that exist at the university. So it is it it is intended to represent both, you know, support the 20% and the 80%, if you will. Yeah?
I think in many cases that this model would support that type of of growth or that type of evolution of a service. Something that starts on a more local level but is still monitored proactively so that when it becomes sensible to deliver it at more of a centralized, for lack of a better word, level, that that happens and that that's supported. So you're, just so everybody hears, you're, yeah, you're asking what the incentive is for things that are developed locally and then essentially taken away and develop and delivered centrally. And I think that the, you know, there's a couple of components of the plan that come into play. There's the IT community, there's IT governance. Because what needs to happen is as that shift occurs, it can't be to the detriment of the group that was initially, you know, delivering that service. It needs to be done so thoughtfully. And, you know, read the, essentially, it should actually serve to better support the service, to make sure that the service gets the resources it deserves as it becomes more beneficial to be delivered at scale.
I I think that's going to be up to the university to determine that to some extent. However, the final one on that 16 list, you know, the the rainbow chart we put up there, hybrid IT organizational model, is about the concept of sharing resources across the IT community. It's about introducing that concept. It's, this is not about developing a one-way street. It's developing a two-way street so that those services can be supported if if it's if it's the right thing to do. I mean, if it does require or demand an enterprise-level support mechanism.
I think it may keep us moving unless there's any other. Okay. So the next piece is sustaining the plan. So earlier in our last session, Clint made a comment about how the plan is really only as good as the day it came off the printer because technology is a moving target and things are always changing. So I think that the work that we've done in developing this plan has been as much about developing the plan document as it has been about developing process for sustaining the plan. So what we've done here is we've created a high-level process. It really, it kicks off in July with the first kind of part of the process, which is an assessment. Here, you're kind of looking back and saying, is our planning process working? Are there things that we need to change about it? Then we we also do a financial review. So as part of the current IT environment assessment work that we did at the beginning of this process, we took a look at all the IT expenditures across the university. And we found that to be a very useful and insightful exercise and have incorporated that into a an annual process. So that's constantly revisited. We also have communicating through the shared governance process. So this is really your outreach, making sure that you continue to engage with the campus community to understand what IT priorities are, what needs are, if there's challenges and opportunities. And then we go into October and November with IT master plan updates. So this is updating the plan document itself as well as some as some of those supporting processes and models that the plan includes. Then December through March is prioritizing and decision-making. And this is where you're starting to look at IT funding specifically. And you're looking at the different types of projects that are in the pipeline, the different needs, and how those all kind of land within the different IT funding categories. April through June, project planning and resource allocation. This is when you're really kind of saying, how are we going to allocate resources to get this done? This is where you're really figuring out the details of the initiatives and fleshing out those action plans further. One thing I will mention is that not everything is always going to neatly fit within this process. So what we've tried to do here is bring some structure to the process of planning, but also recognize there's going to need to be some adaptability and flexibility. And I think that's it, Dave. Unless there's questions at this point?
So next steps. Obviously, the planning continues, but it's more than planning. It's active planning. It's about addressing the action items initiated, identified in the initiatives. And it's about engagement. It's about engagement across the university and in particular, engagement across the IT community so that IT IT service providers, the IT community knows exactly, you know, knows what this plan is about and what is intended to do. And it's going to require action. You know, these initiatives are intended to inform decision-making and priority setting across the university with regards to IT. And that's important. It's important that folks understand the direction and understand that it's an ongoing process. So it is intended to be, as as that cycle identified, revisited on a regular basis. Again, this isn't a one-and-done. You don't start on July 1st, 2015, and end on July 1st, June 30th, 2019, and say, all right, let's build the next plan. Because that's not the way IT works. It's got to be revisited on a regular basis. There's got to be regular reassessment and thinking about how these mechanisms can be utilized to improve the things we talked about earlier around service delivery, collaboration and communication. And, you know, effectively delivering quality services that you already provide and doing it on a university-wide basis so that if there are resources that we can tap into that we're not tapping into now, we know where those resources live and we're able to, again, collaborate across the university better. So those are the, those are the core elements, the core thinking around the plan itself. We'd love to hear from you all. There must be some reaction. As I said in the last meeting, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So I was thinking that since we have three of us, if I took compliments, I would, that would be great. Clint can take complaints, and Vienna will take all the technical questions. So just so it breaks out even, you know, so, but but go ahead. And I know there's a number, oh, please. Yes, in the sense of, you know, moving towards that common framework, yes. Addressing the first party, oh, I'm sorry. So the question was, how are you going to get everyone, and I'll try to do that on each question, how are you going to get everyone on an equal footing and discussing these issues to implement the plan? Is that fair? Yeah, okay. And I think in in many instances, the plan does identify some starting points for that. Again, I I think the other folks in the room might have some thoughts on that from the from the university itself. But it's really, as we said in the prior meeting, this is about, you know, the work here, the heavy lifting is not over, and in many ways, the heavy lifting has just begun. We've created a framework from which to hopefully leverage the weight a little bit better. So the question was, what do you think about other sources to provide enterprise-level support or services to the university? Not thinking about it of kind of a central and distributed IT on the campus, but how do we leverage maybe existing resources that exist like Amazon? I'm sorry, Amazon. Web services, thank you, that exist beyond the community and are growing rapidly today, right? Many of the services, if you will, that could be provided at the university, there is an option to provide those on a software-as-a-service model where you don't need the infrastructure on campus. That's true. We did not, the plan does not say, you know, X number of servers will be removed or X number of, you know, services will be put into the cloud. The the plan does not do that. But what it does do is set up, I think, a starting point to have those discussions about what should be moving off-campus. What should be, you know, again, where does it best fit? And where can we get the best use of of the of the resources we have available to us today? And I think that needs to be, you know, that's that needs to be part of the conversation throughout the planning process. Because again, I mean, those 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 opportunities are not going away. Now, on the flip side of that, you know, there's lots of studies, there's lots of data out there about, you know, moving to a third-party vendor and the dissatisfaction with some of those services. So again, I think each one of those need to be considered on a case-by-case basis as you go through that process. So the question was, are there services that can be provided or or should be looked at and and considered and not have to wait a year for those services to to be provided or or considered maybe in a different, a different way? Is that, or? Yeah, okay. Somebody else want to take that one?
Sure. That was actually part of the discussions as as we were working through it. In fact, when Dave spoke about the funding model, I think he talked about three different types of funding and sustained, sustaining operations, innovative funding and opportunistic or needs. That's one example of an area where the the feeling was that we didn't want to be constrained by some sort of a a a cycle that that would would limit the ability to provide some needed services that that just made sense to be able to provide on a a responsive basis. We may not be able to anticipate exactly what they are, but we can have a structure in place that can be responsive and can anticipate those sorts of services. So I think that was looked at in in several different ways. The idea of the planning of the cycle here, and let's see if I can pull it up, is is to tie in with some of the existing planning components, but not to be limited by it. So I think that's that's really important concept. So did I answer the the question? Pretty much. Okay, thanks. Other questions? I guess I'll turn it back over to Dave here.
We could call on some of the steering committee members to speak since they were actively engaged throughout the process.
That's true, yeah. Any of our, any of our, any of our people who participated? I know some of them I are, you know, are here. Any thoughts that people would like to share with respect to the the plan that, you know, that was developed? Yeah. So one of the things that we we know we wanted to, we we wanted to make sure people were aware of. This plan is, has been posted now on the website, and it's accessible. The link is is here on the screen. We've identified a a two-week window where we would like to get some specific feedback and thoughts on this draft. And and so I think we have a mechanism in CE. The the mechanism is, provides for comments to be made and to go to you. And you'll be compiling those. We'll be able to share comments, but also be able to to view them. And one of the things that we really found is important is to be able to describe plan initiatives in in the right context so that it it can resonate with people and they can understand it. And so if there are some some points in there that you think, gee, you know, you talk about agile, being agile, but I didn't see how that fits with a certain area of the plan, let us know that. And we want to be able to incorporate some of that that into the plan. There may be questions you have about what's in the plan and what's not. We've talked a lot about the context of the plan here already. We've we've described this as a strategic information technology plan. So this is not about dictating who gets what computer, but rather putting in place mechanisms and priorities and and some of the the guiding structures and principles. Yes? Methodology, yeah. Thank you. We're probably using it more in the general sense of of nimbleness here. The, not that we don't, we like agile project methodologies as well, but in this context, we're talking about the, yes? Yeah. Yeah, so the question is, are are we going to have any funding for, you know, for a year until we, you know, get to that point in the the plan? So the intention is is to really make the funding model more clear, to make it more understandable. There certainly is already funding in place for information technology. I think this is one of the important concepts. You know, this is a strategic plan. It lays out some priorities and some some changes that need to be achieved or realized here at the university. Not, it's not something that is immediately impacting day-to-day operations. However, it is about new ways of looking at information technology and managing it in a most proactive process. So the... So the, just because it's, the sequence that it is on the, on this, this chart does not necessarily imply that it's not being, you know, considered. Thank you. The, so the, the question is, is there a lot of thought that goes into these? And yes, that's, that's a big part of the, the sequence of these initiatives and how essentially they build on, on one other, another as well. So. Other questions? Yes? Yes, good question. The question was, do these initiatives focus on helping to retain and attract talent for information technology talent? And that was a big part of the, the work sessions, the thinking is making sure we can retain the right sorts of people and also help them to be most effective at the university. I think that's what led to the identification of the five core competencies that Vienna was taking us through here. So the, the feeling is that it will help people both be very effective here at the university and will help to attract and retain people. Also provide skills if, if they are going to be moving on as, as this is a mobile workforce we have, that are going to be useful to people as well. Yes? IT staff salaries in the bullet points. The, I would say the, I, I, I'm trying to think of a good quip about IT staff and salaries. I haven't, I'm at a loss for that one. So I guess I'd say, no, I mean, the, we didn't, the, the, this does not get into that level of detail, if you will. Although we do contemplate, and you'll see this in the plan, contemplates additional positions, additional needs, you know, for IT staff. I think one of the things that in my experience in plans of this nature, what this helps the university do is to get ahead of, where do we, where are some of the needs going forward? And how do those, some of those needs change and evolve? And that's one of the reasons why, when we were looking at core competencies for IT staff, we actually identified, the work, the work group identified that adaptability and ability to learn and take on new, you know, master new skills would be an important part of that core competencies. So, okay. So, so those are attributes that we think are going to be important for the, for everyone who's part of the IT community. And when we talk about that, keep in mind, when we talk about IT community, we mean centralized IT staff, decentralized IT staff, anyone who is, you know, providing IT services. We think those are, are attributes that we desire those people to have. And also, we want to provide the training and the skill development to, to nurture and encourage those skill development and the growth. It's also not intended to be, everyone needs to do it in the same way. I mean, there are different roles in information technology. Some very technical roles, some, you know, very soft, skill-oriented roles. But we need everyone to, to, in their respective areas, to appreciate how those core competencies are manifested and how they are important. So the idea is, it's not enough for someone just to say, okay, I'm just going to only do my one thing and I'm just going to ignore everything else that goes on, you know, around IT. Because that's not the world of IT that we're in today or in the future. So to be responsive, to be really effective, you know, we need the entire IT community to be talking the same language and understanding, you know, how some of those skills are important and, and the, how to, need to be exhibited in different ways by different, in different roles. So, good question. Yes, sir? Well, I think, so I think knowledge management, we had five areas and I don't have that slide at hand. Do you, we have it? I'd pull that back up at the, it's on the other, yeah.
The other thing while I'm doing that is to mention that I noticed on my link, it said eight, it had the HTTPS, but you can also go HTTP to get to the website. And hopefully, most have been there at one point. The, the website's been active throughout the project, so I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. I think there's some secure login areas of the website, but it's not all HTTPS.
One more page.
There you go.
There you go. So this, on the screen, we've displayed the, the five areas of core competencies here. Leadership, management, technical proficiency, communication, adaptability. As you can see, there's a mix here of some technical skills and then some soft skills. So we talked about things like knowledge management. I can see that manifesting itself in several different ways. I can see it being important for some roles as a technical skill. I can see it also being a, a function that, that supports, that's important in the way people work in, in other ways. Okay, good, thank you. Other questions? Yes. Yes, yeah. And, and as I think Vienna described, there's, there's owners and there's also people in a consultative role that were, felt were very important. So we've tried to identify these initiatives in a way that they provide all the, the elements so that they can be implemented and actions can be taken. Other questions? Dave, did you?
Going once, going twice. So again, March 31st is when we'd like all feedback. And that's, we're using a, you know, a consistent mechanism. CE's collecting that feedback and we'll be working with him to disseminate all of the input that we get. So hopefully, we, we do want a wide array of feedback. I'm just thinking about if everyone in this room was to give us feedback, what that process might be like. But hopefully, you'll talk amongst yourselves before you give us the feedback. So we look forward to hearing from you, though. And hopefully, some of the questions you may not have asked today are answered in reviewing the document in more detail. And it's about a 75-pager, I guess, all said and done with the appendices. So it also outlines in the back the 10 work sessions that were held and who the participants were for those work sessions. So, okay. I think that concludes our afternoon. So we really appreciate you all being here. Thank you.